I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing is to approve the agenda. Mike gave me a cheat sheet even here. We have to add a few things on the agenda relating to number three. Add revised interim ordinance to that. If that does not pass 4-0, then we have to do a resolution regarding that. Correct, Mike?
Yes, only if that worked to receive a full vote of four out of the four.
Right. And then on item three, no, it must've been item five, Patty did not have the contracts with the thing that she emailed us over the weekend, so now we do have the contracts, so those are part of the agenda now. And then also, in the October 9th meeting minutes, the time should be 6 o'clock rather than 6:30. So those are the only changes to the agenda. If anyone has any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. Ken, are you going to take item one?
I'll be up here for one through four.
Well, why don't you just do five and be a home run here?
If I knew anything about it. All right. So item number one, we have a resolution that we'd like the council to approve for the application, approving an application to the Scott County CDA for grant funds for basically a couple of different studies. A water study for our distribution system, and then a sanitary sewer study for our sanitary sewer system. So we've gotten about $80,000 over the past few years from the Scott County CDA. This particular grant would be $108,000, but these studies are very much needed. We are budgeting for them regardless of the grant or not, they need to be done. We're kind of at a point with our growth, with sanitary sewer in particular, for industrial park growth and for commercial growth, that we cannot effectively continue to grow without these studies being completed and giving us an update to our plans that were from 2003 for the sanitary sewer, and then the water study hasn't been updated since 2005. And we've had, the majority of our growth has occurred since that time in the city. So these will, studies will basically be funded if awarded the grant, two-thirds of the funding, with the city providing a local match, specifically the water fund would pay for the portion of the water study, and then the wastewater fund would pay for the portion of the wastewater fund. Ultimately, the goal of the studies is to, obviously, like I said, continue to help the city grow and create jobs, which will enhance the tax base, specifically of Scott County as it pertains to the grant application, but also, obviously, the city as a whole, even into the sewer county. So we do have an application draft attached for your review. Do you have any particular comments for that? But basically, both studies would be contained within the one application. I didn't bring a copy of the sanitary sewer study that we have, actually, Mike did there. If you ever want to take a look at the current one, it's all in paper format. This new study would actually provide some actual flow rates of monitoring devices on our lines to determine if we have actual capacity in different areas, and if we don't, where we need to, obviously, update the plan of planning for lines into the future. So that plan was basically designed up to the year 2050. We're calling the new one the 240 Plan, a little more realistic horizon on that, and have it match up with our comprehensive plan and our growth projections, so it kind of ties those back together again. And then the water one is a little easier to do, that's the less expensive of the two studies, and again, remodeling everything, taking a look at future water tower locations, again, provide that comprehensive picture of the distribution system within the city.
Is this study, the one that we were talking about, helping us determine what our throughputs are over in the new development by Raven Stream?
Correct, correct. Yep. So that'll be one of the areas that'll be important for determining, again, actual flows coming through infrastructure. You know, theoretically, on paper, it looks like we're at a capacity within certain existing trunk lines, but this will determine, hey, on real conditions, are we actually there, or do we have, you know, additional growth that we can handle? We just don't know the answer to that until we get the studies done.
Okay. If we get notification that we get the grant, obviously, the funds are available, like, in 2018?
2018, we would intend in January to get going on both studies, and we have to have the work done then within one year of being awarded. The funds are basically by the end of 2018.
Okay.
One of the things to add when you take a look at what Ken was providing as far as the comprehensive sewer plan dated December of 2003, and the water plan was 2005, is that these were really prepared ahead of the major growth that occurred in that 2002, '03, '04, '05, '06 time periods. And so, when you look at the population estimates that were projected at that time and what's occurred since then, sewer plan's about 14 years old, the other one about 12. That, it really didn't incorporate that major growth spurt, and the revisions to the population. Are a couple of factors that we would take a look at in trying to determine, at least under the comprehensive sewer plan, as Ken mentioned, is the modeling, where we can put the system on, take a look at flows in various areas, and determine whether we really have more capacity left in the system than we think we do, that we, you know, that's all based on speculation, and so we want to try to model that system to determine what true capacity exists, determine what the major cost trunk lines are going to be, to either go east or to go west, so that you're able to evaluate that as we take a look at commercial, industrial, and residential growth in various aspects of the community. So we've got proposals in hand from our city engineer to be ready to go, subject to the decision in December from the Scott County CDA.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken or Mike in regarding to this grant application? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the grant application?
Second.
Second by Amy Jurk. There is any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Ken, do you know, it says November deadline, do you know when we'll have a idea if we got it?
In December.
In December? I must've missed that tonight.
Yeah, there was something about December.
Okay, sorry.
Number two?
For this one, I have a couple of maps we'll be taking a look at. So a couple of different topics that we'll talk about in relation to Scott County transportation issues. So number one is a discussion from Scott County to turn back County Road 37, basically from Chicagoway 21 through town, as I'm kind of tracing on a map here, always goes back down to Highway 19 on Main Street. So we've been maintaining this road as a city for a number of years. We have a maintenance agreement that the council has approved in the past years of a number of different occasions. And basically, we take care of all the maintenance on this road, and would continue to do that if it's turned back. The reason Scott County's looking at what they call a turn back is to take it up their county road system and allot the mileage to another segment of roadway elsewhere in the county, and that helps with state aid funding, like we have state aid roads, which are some of the, basically, the roads mainly the ones in green on the map there, we give funding per mile of roadway. So County Road 37, before they turn it back, we have talked about having them take and repair the road, resurface it, in effect, rebuild it, and we don't have any objections to that, we just wanted to make the council aware that we've had discussions with the county on that. It would become a city street and we would maintain it, pretty much as we have always, but then it would become our responsibility for the more major repairs from that point forward. So that could happen as early as 2018, that road would be basically reconstructed, in effect, storm sewer repaired, some water repaired that we would have to do with our funding, and then obviously, the surface of the roadway, it's a pretty rough road out there, curb and gutter replacement as needed. So I don't know if you have any questions specific to that, and it's kind of a quick overview.
Is the infrastructure, are there any, pretty in good shape?
I mentioned the sanitary sewer structures, or excuse me, the storm sewer structures, there's something that needs to be looked at, and I think Glenn is actually doing a walk-through sometime this week with county staff again to verify what is in poor shape for the ball ground stuff. I know Water Department indicated some pretty minor water main repair through a portion of that.
They just really brought us up to speed on that about a month ago, and then we had a follow-up meeting with the latter part of what Ken's going to go through with both the sewer county and Scott County, so we've just been apprised of this, but in the discussions about how quick they'd want to do the turn back, they're wanting to have an agreement yet this fall possibly to be able to do this, with the idea that they would do the work in 2018, so that it's done and all ready to go for when we do the 2020 project in the downtown.
Okay.
As we've kind of talked, that 37 might be kind of a local bypass that actually was mentioned at the last council meeting.
With that, when we get that, when they turn it back to us, does that become a state aid road?
Yes.
So then...
And we're actually allotted additional mileage over and above our typical state aid mileage from our totals, because it's obviously a road we weren't necessarily anticipating to be on our system, but you can add that as a, it's kind of a bonus in fact, but obviously, you have a road that you have to maintain, they didn't have before either.
So some of the infrastructure that we're talking about, is that going to be the city's responsibility, or the county, or shared?
We're not subject to what Glenn finds out in doing some, I think he's doing some videotaping with them, but we're really talking manhole covers, storm sewer intakes, water valves, some of those kind of things. We're not really looking at having to do any major reconstruction of water or sewer lines.
Okay.
When they redo it, then do we have a final inspection before we take it over?
We've, in all of the discussions we've had, we've had Chris Gavitt in as our city engineer, trying to take a look at it, that it, obviously, will be a county project down in the county engineer's office, just like if we were doing the project, but yes, we take a look at it to make sure that the end product is what's acceptable to us.
Yeah, they had some problems with projects this summer. It didn't turn out very smooth. I just want to make sure it's not a burden to the taxpayers, it's a 30-year-old road, so that has me concerned with what's underneath it, too.
Yep. Some sections are older than others, if you get over, obviously, to the realignment in your chart, you know, it's somewhat newer than portions over by Holiday, Subway, and that area.
Would there be any assessments to homeowners for new curb and gutter, or set, borne by the county?
Most, all of it would be borne by the county, with the exception of those pieces applicable to our own utilities. If we had to raise manhole covers or do some things there, if we had to adjust water valves, I think they'll do the storm sewer, there may be a slight cost share on the storm sewer rebuilding of some of those. So we don't actually have a lot of additional information that we convey tonight, other than we had at the initial meeting, and basically, they're going to come to us and telling us that they're wanting to look at this, because likewise, as the state of Minnesota is doing that to them, they're looking at taking some of the state highways in Scott County and pushing them down to county level. So we're seeing some of the county stuff come down to us, because they're trying to open up other new stuff or replace it in different locations, and so there's kind of a little bit of a movement there. They have the billies under the state law, but, you know, we generally wouldn't propose to accept it or re-part of it unless it's brought up to standards that are set as factory to, obviously, our public works director and city engineer.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to related staff deals as a related topic, because we also had discussion on possible turn back of County Road 15 from Main Street, just along this avenue, north up by the high school in Falcon Ridge Elementary. So where it then heads in the eastbound direction and out of town, which is 12th Street, if you don't want it in town, but that's all County Road 15, north on Main, and then making that eastbound direction, and then north out of town. So Scott County brought us this map, which they titled the Jurassicional Transfer Map, specifically with the idea that County Road 15 is also discussed to be a turn back, and we're a little further behind, I guess, in the talks on that, but really, the bigger takeaway out of here is this idea of the county exploring, and they wanted to get the city's opinion on taking County Road 15 or taking County Road 89 off the county road system. And basically, they tell us flat out, there will not be two county roads, they're too close together, it'll either be County Road 15 or it'll be County Road 89. These will be a turn back in portions to the city and/or the township. Now, obviously, we had the township at the meeting that we had here at City Hall a few weeks back on the 22nd of September. It's obviously a big burden for the township to take over any portion of either County Road 15 or Redway Avenue, which is County Road 89, but the implications are even larger than that. The council may or may not be aware, we actually have a memorandum of understanding for the alignment of County Road 15 or coming known as Alton Avenue through the entire east portion of New Prague, both in Scott County and Lesure County. They have a separate MOU between the city, the county, and the township for the portion, obviously, north of Main Street, Scott County, and the Lesure County, south of Main Street. Does some of you outlines that...
Ken, is that, on the south, is that going all the way to, what, 29?
Yep, actually, it goes a little further than that. I'm going to draw up a better map here for you. It's not a great map, it's been photocopyed a few times over the years, but this is the alignment map that was at the very end of your packet. So the portion by Covert's is actually installed right now, with developments looking at installing the roundabout in that intersection possibly this fall yet, but then it would continue down to County Road 29, and actually, further, all right, it's not going to go, anyway, further to the south. There we go. And eventually, that would link up with what is the alignment of County Road 144, just a bit south of its intersection by Tenth Avenue, where the new four-way stop was just put in by Tecloskey Acres. So this alignment would basically wind through that section of land and then connect back up. So the connectivity down Montgomery is key for the county and key for the cities as well, to get those residents, comes in kind of the east side of Montgomery down there, and that's where a lot of people from the more rural Lesure County area come through to New Prague, and then obviously, some of them work in New Prague, and that's their destination, but a lot of people do continue to the north as well.
Is that County Road 144, isn't that County Road 3?
County Road 3, no, excuse me. Yeah, this map's a few years old, so it is County Road 3.
Okay.
Correct. So we have that general alignment in this study from 2006. We continue to, obviously, develop following that memorandum of understanding within Lesure County. We have not had any activity on the north side. I'll just jump around a little bit here. We have not had any activity for development north of Main Street within the Scott County area. So the point staff and, believe it the townships and city made at our meeting with county was that this is still an important route. We understand that growth from 2006 to now has slowed quite a bit, but we still have these agreements we've entered into. The counties have both agreed to pay a little over 15% of those upsizing costs of the county road, and we feel it's important to keep that as county alignment through the county, both Lesure County and Scott County. So that was our position we took with Scott County staff, and we basically wanted to bring this to you here tonight and put the agreements in front of you. Those are also in the packet, I'm not going to go through every detail, but ultimately, what we'd like is basically your review and concurrence that we feel these agreements are still valid and still important for that alignment of essentially what at this point would be a bypass, but in the future provides what we believe is a vital connection, an alternate north-south route up to the Shakopee area and 069, whereas County Road 89 does not provide that. We obviously have the offset intersection there. Scott County was attempting to make the argument that that might be the better alternative, however, as you head further south, it does not connect any further into Lesure County to actually pick up the traffic patterns that are there today. You have to have some pretty major roadway improvements made as you continue, basically just south of New Prague. You hit 29, I'll just pull the map here, at that funny intersection by Santa Creek there, and it doesn't go anywhere, it just basically turns into a gravel road a couple miles further south. So the connectivity's not there. So county reiterated that, we reiterated that, and basically, just looking for, ultimately, we thought we would recommend that the county, or the city council authorized staff to draft a letter to the Scott County Board asking to keep the alignment of County Road 15 per our MOU, and have that be kept in the city's comprehensive planning process. They're basically putting this map together that I put initially for the 2040 comprehensive plan process that they're working on, and again, they're just for discussion purposes, but we thought it was important enough to basically get our oar in the water and reiterate that we think the County Road 15, Alton Avenue alignment is the important route for New Prague and the region. So ultimately, we're not proposing any changes to the agreement or anything, we still think they're valid, and they are, so tell anybody who would want to vote to otherwise, but we think the letter would be justified to make that point again, that we're still following that plan, and we still think it's a good alignment, and continue on that path.
Before the mayor opens it up, pretty comment from anybody. Can you give a little bit of a history, since you were involved in the discussion, which was probably one of the Lesure County side, if I recall, on this whole future alignment, coming out County Road 15 with Scott County down through Alton Avenue to 19, and then the continuation on the east side of Covert's down through there, down to 29. Can you talk about who was all involved and what the scope of that discussion was, and to get the word for the council to understand that there was a lot of interaction between the various governmental entities to come up with this long-term highway alternative and a route alignment? And it's important, as we begin to start to take a look at where new development might occur within the community, is that if that development comes forward, is we need to make sure that it's being done in and around, in conjunction with the transportation alignments that have been developed in agreement between the township, the city, and both counties. So I think it's important to understand, maybe we'll move on, if you can explain it just real briefly.
So the studies actually began within the Scott County portion, was the study that was done first. SEH was actually, not the city engineer at the time, but they were the engineer that worked on this study, specifically Mike Codala. They're partially funded by the city and the county for these realignment studies. So the impetus was, we knew growth was coming, there had already been a very big increase in building permits. Our comprehensive plan was updated in the year 2000, and by 2004, when that study was basically kicked off with Scott County, there was already considerable pressure kind of to the northeast in New Prague to the plan for a future, another alignment north-south through the community. That continued with Lesure County after I started basically in November, or October of 2004, and I was involved in those meetings. We had considerable discussions with various landowners that were all, obviously, not too happy with the alignment, there's cutting through farms, you have Jeremy Toopie owns some property and others through that area. Ultimately, everybody came to the understanding that it was necessary and needed to get people safely through the area into New Prague, and then obviously, further to the north. This alignment, it is essentially conceptual, but it provides specific access points to our existing roadway infrastructure, so we'd continue to develop. That way, obviously, it's guided the eastland development, so the Covert's there. But yeah, considerable money, considerable time, I think it took about a year studying ultimately, specifically from what I recall firsthand with the Lesure County study, with a number of meetings down at Lanesburg Township Hall with residents, open houses, and the like. And again, a lot of it was not very popular, but provided the necessary means to provide that agreement between all the parties involved there. And my understanding, too, Renee Kishen's was the planner that worked primarily on the road north of Main Street, and that was how that had gone with Lesure County as well. And actually, on Lesure County, to give you a little more background, or with Scott County, excuse me, I actually have this to pan, and I'll not pan. The county and city actually acquired a property that was within the alignment area, basically the Michael May property in this area that was acquired a number of years ago, I think. Mike, maybe you were, just got to the city at that point in preparation of providing for that alignment. So that is one thing that has been done in the Scott County portion as well. The county is the formal owner, but the city was in on that as well. So Mike May was the owner at the time, and if you look it up on the Scott County records, it just shows Scott County as the owner of that property. And that was a considerable, I think, 300 and some thousand dollars upwards of that. So again, you know, I don't have the exact dollar amount that city put into it or the county put into it, but there's considerable time and effort put into it on a number of different fronts, and we would just hate to see that, you know, put to the east side.
So in simple terms, what that is, is the framework for the future construction of a highway system. Nobody's going to jump out and build that whole thoroughfare at any given time, but as development plaits come to the city, or developer want to propose development in certain areas, it's our responsibility, with this being developed between the township, the city, and the county, is that we have plaits that fit into this framework, and that you build those segments as it becomes necessary, or depending upon how much development comes at any given time, is that maybe more can be built. But nobody's going to run out there and build that whole highway system, but it's the framework of what is there and has been approved between all the different governmental entities. We felt it necessary to kind of bring that back to you, again, because of what we were seeing and hearing with our meetings with Scott County, and then as you take a look at their draft outline in this 2040 comprehensive plan, is, we believe it's imperative, as you look at the north and northeast corner of our city, that that segment coming down off County Road 15, on the curve up in the northeast corner there, that that's where it's designed to break off and come into Alton Avenue, and that likely, if and when that ultimately ever occurs, is that segment, and more likely, almost all of County Road 15 and the city could come back to us as a turn back someday, but there's much more extensive work being needed on County Road 15, north and south, kind of what we know as Columbus. Before, we'd ever recommend that you undertake that, but long term, that's in apparently Scott County's vision, that they would want to abandon that segment of County Road 15 within the corporate city limits. We've also had discussions along those lines, just to give you one last quick piece, is we've also had discussions with Lesure County that ultimately, they may like to do a turn back of First Avenue Southeast, south of the four-way stoplight going south, that that portion that is theirs someday would have to be improved, but they've also put us on notice that that likely will come in the future as well.
Ken, sir, you had something in common?
No, John Warmus-Kishen, chairman of Helena Township, and we are in favor of County Road 15. We would support that. We are not really supporting 89 unless we get more details. It's going to be a hardship for the township to even take on, if they gave us 89 back, we don't get state aid like the city would or the county would. So for us to take over an 89 would be financially hard on the taxpayers, but the alignment of 15, we would support that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So if they ask, just to clarify, if they ask for us to take over the city portion of 15, would that be at the time the quarter goes in and through?
The turn back could occur prior to that.
Then...
The alignment being completed, that's what's been talked about, at least initially.
Okay, but wouldn't the counties still participate then in the...
Per the MOU, yes.
For the quarter? Okay.
They asked us whether we would be interested in having Scott County get out of that and turning that over control back to us, but if we did that, then we'd lose, what, Ken, 15% of the funding?
We would lose 15% of funding.
Of the parrotta share that we would be eligible for with being able to get that improved with county funding. So we're not really wanting to rush out there and do anything of that nature at the present time, and so while the former gen item was just kind of what might be happening with County Road 37... Route 37, as they prepare this plan, we felt it imperative to have the discussion with the two old counties and the townships, that we take a look at this because of the pressure coming from Scott County wanting to turn back of both of these long-term, as well as what they might be doing with the alignment there. And, you know, we were quite concerned that, and as you take a look at one of their concerns, they're getting at the same thing. Middon is wanting to turn back Highway 21, US Highway 21 over here in Scott County, that Middon is wanting to turn back that back to the county, as well as Highway 13 in Scott County, they're wanting to turn that back to Scott County. And as you take a look at the alignment, what we've been informed is, as you take a look at ultimately there, depending on how things go with Middon, is that the Highway 13 that now goes up through Prior Lake and Savage to connect to 169, ultimately could possibly be realigned going north up directly into Shakopee. I'm trying to...
Marshall Road.
Yeah, 17.
Marshall Road, 17, that that could be realigned possibly into Highway 13. So there's a lot of pieces moving here with what the county is working on, but we felt it imperative and appropriate as we looked at these alternatives, wanted to get the county and, or the township involved in those discussions. I think Kent was surprised when we put it together that the county wasn't necessarily desirous of inviting the townships, but we felt an obligation and a loyalty to the townships to make sure that we work together on this because of all of the work that had gone on and all the pre-planning. And there's no sense going through that work and throwing it out the window and, you know, going to something else. And so we had that meeting ultimately, which is why we're wanting to bring it to you, that we think we need to put a letter into the county, let it know the council's feelings about holding out to the MOU and the planning that we have for County Route 15 coming into New Prague, as well as the corridor going north, that we felt it's important and a whole lot of those concepts.
Okay.
So what we would do would be to develop the letter along those lines with signature from the mayor.
Okay. Any other questions, sir? Okay. I guess I would look for a motion to approve a letter of support utilizing County Route 15, continue with the plan of having County Route 15 as the alternate to the through rule.
Versus 89.
Versus 89, yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I've got a motion by Dave Bruchek, second by Amy Jurick, for a letter of support. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you for the township people turning it on tonight. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you guys for being proactive. It's kind of a big thing.
Next, you taking this one too, Ken?
I will, with attorney assistance.
Here, maybe it might make sense, since we have our township representatives here, maybe we could flip-flop items four and five, or excuse me, three and four.
Okay.
While they're here and take that one and come back to it.
Sure.
If that's permissible to the council.
Yes, I don't, anyone have a problem objection to that?
No.
All right, so.
Okay, we're going to flip-flop three and four, so we're going to handle number four right now, which is the, I guess, reintroduction of a joint planning commission?
Yep, so it's never formally gone away. The city just hasn't had anybody appointed to this joint planning commission. And that's per our 1978 orderly annexation agreement with Helena Township. And that agreement outlines that two residents should be from the township, two from the city, and then one from the county at large. So the township has actually kept the top of it and has kept the appointment of their members throughout. We just simply have not kept up with that. Joint Planning Commission has not met during my time with the city here, 13 years, so we do need to do that. And near as I can tell, unless the township knows otherwise, our records show that that lasted mid on April 28th of 1999. I don't know.
Sounds about right.
So it's been a while. And essentially, the only reason this is ever needed is in our joint orderly annexation area, and I don't have the map on the overhead, I apologize, but I basically outline the areas that are within the orderly annexation agreement. So anytime there's a land use proposal within that area, there is the need to have the county present those planning requests to the Joint Planning Commission. And the Joint Planning Commission then provides an advisory, review, and feedback to the county as they review the land use request. Now, specific to this item that we have on hand, we actually have a property that's just on the east side of Alton Avenue alignment that we talked about, it's owned by Patrick Soderland, who's applied for a rezoning over there, and it's within the orderly annexation area per the agreement. And before the county can take action, we have to have the Joint Planning Board meet. So essentially, last time we had the Joint Planning Commission, we had two council members appointed to that, Laura Broad and Dwayne Jurick. Talked to Scott Regs about who we could appoint, and it was very broadly worded, we can appoint any two members of the community, doesn't necessarily have to be council or planning commission members. But we talked and would recommend one council member and probably one planning commission member, just so there's a little more planning commission background in that realm of things because it'll be essentially reviewing land use application and providing feedback. So we talked to Amy last week. Amy, okay, you would be interested as also as a rep of the planning commission. And then should you want to also choose a sole planning commission member, Bob Gilman and Dan Meyer were interested. However, Bob said he would defer to Dan, as Dan spoke up first, as being, wanting to participate in that. So I would recommend either of them to serve. But it could also be any, anybody else at your discretion. It's completely up to the council to make that determination on who they'd like to appoint. And I think we'll just probably make this an annual appointment with all the other board and commission appointments at the first of the year from now on, just so we have somebody appointed. So, so for any discussion on who you would like to appoint?
Just as a clarification, Ken, this group that means two from the city, two from the township, the county appoints one, then it's an advisory recommendation?
Solely advisor.
Recommendation to the county planning commission?
To the county planning commission, county board ultimately, because that recommendation would go on up the chain. The meeting would be here in New Prague when they would call that to order. We don't know the exact date or time for this particular matter, but it likely would be here in New Prague, so you wouldn't have to travel to Shakopee.
Ken, who would staff this meeting?
The county.
County staff?
Yep, because this is county land use application. So Lisa Schicken-Danz of Scott County is actually the staff county planner that's preparing all the paperwork.
But we'll have to post a...
But I will provide support as well.
And we'll have to post it like any public meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve Amy Jurick and Dave Meyer to be the representatives from the city?
Dan.
Dan Meyer, excuse me. I just can't read real well, but.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Thank you.
That way they didn't have to sit through the next one.
Next on the agenda, we have, we're going to item three now, since we flip-flopped.
So I will actually, I'll do a little background first. I just did, I did want to introduce Andrew Biggerstaff, attorney from Scott Regs' office here tonight. Scott's a little under the weather, but Andrew had actually worked on the majority of the interim ordinance here that's in front of you tonight. So probably have Andrew provide a little more background here in a moment, but I wanted to provide a little, little bit of a background here for the council. So we have an interesting week for simply inquiries on potential land uses within the city. Inquiry number one, I'll call it, involved a property in the downtown area with a use that would fit the definition of an assisted living facility as we have it defined in our zoning ordinance, but would not be what you might typically associate with an assisted living facility. And essentially could involve addiction treatment for residents age 55-plus. And that's considered a housing and services establishment per the Minnesota Department of Health. So that gives you a little background on that without getting too specific. Staff is concerned, basically in the face of assisted living buildings in general in the B1 district, if you look at our purpose of the B1 district, it's really to encourage survival downtown for retail, service, and office and entertainment. This really doesn't provide any of those items, in my opinion, anyway. It also does additionally allow residential above the first floor commercial establishments. So again, it goes back to your typical apartments above a Main Street shop and that second level, you know, would have the apartments above it. So this is a little different than that. This is kind of completely taking a fromage on Main Street and putting it into this assisted living type of environment, which doesn't necessarily help the foot traffic into and around the downtown area. So that's kind of staff's opinion on taking a look at amending the zoning ordinance potentially if you feel the interim ordinance is something we should do, to look at a couple of different options, actually a multitude of options, but just one that comes to mind is possibly removing assisted living from the B1 district. A little more background to that, we do not have any assisted living in the B1 district. The Philip Square apartments are in the B1 district, but that is an apartment building for those that are basically 55-plus, but they do not have services. So having services like nursing and other care provided is kind of the distinguishing point there between an apartment building and the assisted living or housing and services. So that's kind of staff's thought on that topic. Second item and second inquiry we received was something that in our B2 district, basically out on the east side of town, little newer commercial area, was a use that would potentially fit the definitions of either clinic or healthcare facility and would possibly involve medication-assisted addiction treatment. And we can go more specific if you'd like to, but we have some concerns about that particular because it would involve, in this case particularly, inpatient care for longer-term stays for treatment. Now, we do not allow certain uses in our B2 district, typically residentially, and this would almost be, you know, we used to get into more people staying longer term. So that's kind of, again, the thought that staff is concerned about there, having, you know, longer-term stays, longer-term treatment in a facility like this, which is generally a commercial-type district. Along with the concern of that, we also list these clinics and healthcare facilities with inpatient care as conditional uses, not only in the B2 district, but also in the B1 district and all residential districts of the city. So that's some concerns about that. Again, you're getting into a quasi-residential, but also kind of a business-type use. So hospitals obviously are something that we have historically allowed in residential districts. I think, you know, it's worked well in New Prague in the past, so not quite sure how we'll end up approaching this topic. But we do not have any performance standards for healthcare facilities that obviously have inpatient treatment in our zoning ordinance. Rather than approaching it on a case-by-case basis, we're trying to come up with conditions for each one. I think the route that I might initially like to go with this is to look at conditions for clinics and/or healthcare facilities that involve inpatient care, have some criteria set up in the zoning ordinance so that they know what they're getting into and the council and planning commission knows with some certainty that these are the conditions that would need to be met. We don't have that currently, so I think that just kind of helps everybody know upfront what the underlying issues are and should be addressed before something goes into an So that's kind of the background on that. Our concern, as well as that, the way our ordinance is written, we don't feel that our ordinance has handled these appropriately at this point. This where I began discussions last week, and we worked very quickly with Andrew and Scott as well to put together this emergency interim ordinance. And that allows staff time to further study the issues that we've brought up here tonight related to these two topics. And you can have up to one year of a time period to review these, but we don't necessarily need to use the full year as it's written in the ordinance. So if you'd like to cut that back, we certainly could pick a different date. I don't know, I suppose at this point, Andrew, I probably took out your thunder, but if you had any other comments, I guess, about the interim ordinances in general and kind of that process? We don't, we, last time we didn't only use this for chickens, so we don't do these very often.
And sexual predators, I think.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Ken said, Andrew Biggerstaff, Kenny and Graven. Just a couple of quick comments, I think Ken laid it out really well. As he pointed out, one of the goals of interim ordinances just generally is to protect sort of your planning process. Couple of key things to remember is that if you were to adopt an interim ordinance tonight that doesn't foreclose on any of these uses in the future necessarily, all it does is authorize the city to take some time to think about it, to do some studies, to look what other communities have done with respect to these types of uses. So, you know, if there's any concern that this would be closing the door on any of these types of things, you know, there's plenty of opportunity to take a closer look at it and come up with something. Also, as Ken said, one of the reasons that we kind of went this route is that it's not uncommon for zoning codes to fail to include some future use that frankly you couldn't come up with when you adopted your zoning code. And I think that these examples, these inquiries are really good examples of that. It's just changing times, you know, people are starting to do different types of things and, you know, development's always moving forward with new ideas. So really what this is, is a chance, if the council wants to sort of put a pause on things, to take a closer look at it, come up with some performance conditions and things like that, that you feel are appropriate to protect the zoning and the underlying uses of the neighboring properties and things like that. So that's kind of the general background. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the ordinance and the process, but I think Ken laid it out really well, so.
Andrew, could you touch on, we have a replacement ordinance from what was included in the council packet?
Sure.
Could you explain that and then what's necessary in the consideration of the adoption? And depending upon what that outcome is, determines whether it's necessary to handle the resolution that we added as an agenda, item three, which will now be four.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So it's all fairly technical in nature, but your charter authorizes you to adopt an emergency ordinance that is going to affect upon adoption. The revised ordinance draft that you have changes, fixes the effective date in the original ordinance, which required, I believe, those adoption, posting, and some other requirement. The revised ordinance would, in fact, in compliance with your charter, go into effect upon approval. So there wouldn't be a waiting period, it would go into effect, and that would stop any future applications that came in during the time of the moratorium. The other piece of it is, as you may be aware, the city generally publishes or copies of ordinance by title and summary. State law requires a four-fifths vote of the council, and because there are only four of you here tonight, that would require a yes vote from everyone. So if it were that the ordinance was adopted three to one this evening, that essentially the publication by title and summary would be, would not pass. The rest of the ordinance would, that piece would not pass. So we also prepared a resolution authorizing publication by title and summary that you could consider and hopefully get a four oh vote. And all that does is it means that instead of publishing all three pages of the ordinance, you just publish one paragraph. It's simply a cost-saving measure, but it does have that higher vote threshold. So those are the two pieces to it. If the ordinance is adopted four nothing, then you can ignore the resolution because the ordinance also authorizes publication by title and summary and includes the summary in the, I believe, in section four. So it's all fairly technical, but we'll make sure that if you go that relative, we do it.
It would require a roll call vote?
If that's your norm, typically, no. I mean, there's no general roll call requirements on most votes. So you could certainly do it that way, but typically it would be up to the chair to determine if they would be able to.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
No. I think it's a good idea to put in this interim ordinance, and I would recommend going the full year. Just, we don't have to go that long. Just, we don't have to go that long if we figure this out beforehand, but...
Yeah, that's a good point. I apologize, I forgot to mention that as well. Ken's absolutely right, the draft of the ordinance does state that it will be in for roughly a year, I think.
I think October 1st we put in there next year.
The council, if you were to, if you were to come back with a study or you change your mind in three months or six months or nine months, you can always repeal the interim ordinance, you can adopt regulations in the meantime. So really, the year is the maximum. Adopting it for a year today would not lock you in for that. You can come back and if things change or you're satisfied with what you've come up with in six months, you can repeal the rest of it and it goes away. So typically, our recommendation is always to do the year, just to make it easier so you don't have to come back and re-adopt an extension or something like that, and then just repeal it if you get to a place that you're comfortable doing that before the year is up.
I guess what my comment is, is now healthcare facilities have taken on such expanded use definition that I think what this implied beforehand has far changed from what it is used today. And I think it behooves us to maybe clarify what we mean by healthcare facilities, or specify a different language in our ordinances. That's my take on this.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. And again, looking at what other communities do, you know, this isn't unique to any one community. I think everybody's kind of dealing with, trying to keep up with those things at the same time. So that's definitely right.
I agree. I think it gives us time to research it and have more definitions and look into the language more, so we know the expectations.
I also agree. I mean, in light of the recent conversation we had even just with some building code that we talked about, you know, new things are coming all the time. So I think this is a perfect time to just take a step back and thoughtfully look at the ordinance.
So I make a motion to approve ordinance number 300, emergency interim ordinance regarding...
Okay, I got a motion by Amy Jurk, second by Dave Bruchek. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Therefore, the resolution is not needed to be done. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. Okay, Mike, I assume you're taking this next one?
Yeah, Patty bailed on us, so I said that I would tell her that it was generally fairly selfish plan, I was worried with you being the CPA and you being an accountant, that you'd be able to back me up in this. But what we have is, Patty had some personal things where she was out of the office last week and didn't get back to play afternoon, and that's why the memo was sent out by email to you. So we wanted to provide hard copy along with the agreements from Hildy Incorporated. We have used Hildy to assist us in the meeting of the GASP requirements on our Volunteer Fire Relief Association the past two years for 15 and 16. We have to continue to use that and to go forward, and it's done on a two-year cycle. And so as you can see in the information from Patty is we have to do 2017 and 2018 here together. The estimated cost for 17 is about $2,200, and the 2018 is $1,000. And as you can see in there, it applies to the financial reporting for the Fire Relief Association and our city's financial reporting and the interconnectedness that there is in that regard. The second part of it is to comply with post-employment benefit, OPEB plans, other than pensions, which is a part of GASP Statement 75. And what they're looking for there, as Patty identified, is approving the accounting of financial reporting by state and local governments for post-employment benefits other than pensions. And as she states in there is that these benefits can principally involve healthcare benefits, but may also include life insurance disability, legal and other services. In our case, the only impact or calculation that we would have relative to this OPEB liability is in the area of the healthcare benefit. And again, in our case, is that this benefit is being available to employees upon retirement with the employee bearing the entire cost of the health insurance premium. So there is no city payment or contribution to any post-employment benefits when somebody leaves. There's a severance that the council's able to prove with retirement, and a few other factors there. But there is no post-employment providing of benefits, but we have to go through and obviously do the analysis of the reporting. And so as Patty's looking at this with Hildy, is that they'd have to do the reporting on this to be compliant. Estimated cost for 2017 is $1,900 to $2,100 as the base year. The 2018 is based on the results along with the disclosures in the second year. In 2018 is $800.
So who bears the cost for those?
Well, we do, this is all part of our ultimate financial accounting. We will code the GASP, the first two will go into the fire department that we split on a 50/50 basis with the Rural Fire Association. The second one regarding the GASP 75, that would be all the city's responsibility.
Mike, have we had this come before us before? I don't remember this.
No, you did on the first one with GASP 67 and 68. You approved, we did the years 15 and 16.
We did.
So, yeah, you did have it once before. The one on GASP 75 tonight is new. So that one has not been reported before.
But this is only the second time that we've had to have the GASP 67. So it is relatively new.
This would be kind of years three and four, so it could be years three and four under that reporting.
I know my memory wasn't as good as it used to be, I just didn't remember this one.
It's all, as you take a look at the ultimate, the financial accounting statements of the city as far as that disclosure, trying to make sure that, you know, the issues that, you know, the city is required in our relationship with the rural, or the Fire Relief Association is that depending upon what the benefit is that's approved between the city and the firemen determines whether there is a needed contribution or not. And the benefits that they have, they take a look at whether that fire relief pension fund is fully or partially invested based on what happens in the financial accounting world and their investments. And as it takes a look at our obligations, we're trying to disclose that in our overall financial reporting. And then obviously, there has been major impacts to cities around the country in regards to the second one, GASP 75. I can point to a number of cities that I know that obligated, let's say, when employees retired, you know, depending upon their age or what the scope was, is providing health insurance or other benefits that are paid for, in some cases up to 100% by the city. And so those would change until either age 62 or full retirement. We don't do that here, so we don't have any worries that way. But I can tell you some cities up in northern Minnesota that, with a little bit of work, you could probably figure out what some of them are, but, you know, those cities agreed to through union contracts and personnel policy benefits, agreed to provide certain benefits upon retirement for a number of years that obligated the city, and that's become a huge financial burden in some respects associated with it. So they're trying to disclose what that financial impact is to the city.
Any other questions or comments?
So my recommendation would be, would be to authorize entering into the agreements for consulting services with Hildy to address both GASP 67 and 68 and GASP 75.
If there's no other questions, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agreements with Hildy for the GASP 67 and 68 and GASP 75 contracts.
Second.
I got a second by Amy Jurk. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay. Moving right along, consent agenda. Now, we did, I just want to make a note that we did change the time on the October special council meeting to start at 6:00 PM versus 6:30. Besides that, anyone else have any other questions or issues on that?
Those things to me, these kids.
These rookies, we got to make them do something.
At least you know I'm reading with you.
Okay, if there's no question, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Are you going to make the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said...
No, I was looking for...
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Dave Bruchek. There's no other questions or any questions, issues on the consent agenda, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay. Now miscellaneous. Ma'am, do you have something you want to address the council with?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your address for the records, if you'd be so kind.
My name is Roxanne Toma. I'm at 408 Second Avenue Northwest here in New Prague. I'm just bringing it to your attention, if you haven't had any other complaints in act regarding it, regarding the First Avenue Northwest going up and down by the school district where the tennis courts is. I know my husband talked to you, Chuck, at one point in time before school started, that we should try, if you guys could check into doing a one-way, one-side parking instead of parking on both sides, because I travel that every day. And there's times I can't even get up the street, I have to make, figure out a different way home. I shouldn't have to go up Columbus to the hospital and cut all the way across to get to my house. There's one night I was, there's parking on both sides of the street by the tennis court and the soccer field, back of the swimming pool. There's a bus there, we have, one car can go through one at a time, you have to wait to turn to go. And everything else, I wanted to know if there's any way you guys have checked into it regarding parking on one side of the road? Otherwise, this is ridiculous.
Ken, I thought we did discuss that at one time.
Yep, so in the condition use permit for the CEC and the tennis courts actually as well, no parking is to be signed on the east side of the road by the school. Staff is not to be parking on the road. They're supposed to park in the parking lots and...
This is at night.
Yeah, and...
And nobody will park in that parking lot up there and walk all the way down to the tennis courts. And everybody's parking by the tennis courts, by the soccer field, and there's not enough room in this, for the swimming pool. I have school buses parked on one side, I have cars on the other side, people are trying to get out of their driveways. I'm trying to get up, people are trying to get down. At one point in time, when it was gravel, you could not park on that road because of the school buses for inception and everything else, or you got your car towed away. For a fact, I know it, because one night, one day when my husband was going to work and our car broke down, I was getting a phone call at seven in the morning before school and everything else saying, we need to remove your car because of school buses. Even though there's no school, like, school is not going on at night, but there is because of soccer fields and soccer tennis and everything, you still can't get through. Why are they parking on the roads? There should have been a parking lot somewhere else closer so people could park than up here in the sweet parking lot that nobody wants to park in. You guys are always, the school district is always wanting their football fields, baseball fields and everything else. Why are we doing all these different soccer, these fields? Why can't you guys make parking lots closer for people to park in to get into, for them to get to these games? I recommend you guys check into it and have to figure out a better way for us to get up and down that street, because I do travel this day in and day out. I shouldn't have to look online to see if there's a game or something going on to figure out how long I'm going to get home.
The signs will go up, they simply have not been put up because construction is not completed yet, and the whole east side will be signed as no parking. It just is not, not done yet because they weren't complete, but I think it's time to do that.
I think it is, because this is ridiculous.
Okay. So as long as she's here, Ken did say it's the east side, and the reason in the discussions with city staff that ultimately went through the council, the reason for the east side was to try to make sure that the parking along the west side adjacent to the houses was available most of the time for the residents of that area. That we know during the daytime that there were probably some use, but as we tried to, when the council did approve it, is it was a requirement that all teachers will be required to park in those parking lots and the swimming pool and those other facilities. When they have different uses, that we understand that that's going to filter out, but when the council did approve that originally, is it was with no parking on the east side so that we could do just exactly what you're asking for and to try to make sure the residents, when it was non-school events or activities, that you still could use the street for parking of guests or other people coming to visit.
And additionally, the school even for events at the pool and other things like that, one of the conditions for approval is that they have to provide information to the participants and the spectators, that they need to direct them from that lot on the, you know, the new lots where the old school is tore down, and then provide signage to direct them down to the pool area or the gymnasium, because we can't have people parking out in the road like that.
I have to go and do stuff at Court 6 at night, and I'm going past the hospital and everything else by the cemetery to go down Columbus to go to where I have to go. And then when I come back, it's like, okay, I should have never, do I go all the way to MVA to cut across to go to Casey's? Or where do I need to go? Because this is, I, it's unbelievable trying to get through.
Her concerns are well noted, we anticipated that, we did acknowledge, we tried to find a way to work with both the school and the neighborhood, trying to find some ways to do it, it was very difficult. She's correct that if there is parking on both sides of the road, we took a look at it with both the planning, public works and public safety, trying to take a look at that. Our concern was, can we get a fire truck down the road? Can we get ambulance down the road? And she is correct that at times during those timings, it was very difficult. And yeah, with the CUP that was approved with the school district, is the signage basically had to go up at the end of construction. If we shut it off there, then it would have had a major impact in that, but you are correct, ma'am. And then it is time that we'll work with the school to get that signage up so that there is no parking on the east side of the street, so that it's only on the west side.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing to our attention.
Ken, do you have an idea when the signage will go up?
I don't recall if Glenn had already ordered the signage or not. If he has, it can go very quickly. I think we, should be more than two weeks, I wouldn't think it the most. We'll get right on that.
But the neighborhood has put up with an awful lot in the construction, and we acknowledge that, and I wish there was an easier way, but the challenges are at times working with school facilities, whether they have all of the sufficient parking spaces needed for all of those facilities. And I think it's been a challenge for that throughout the entire community in different segments or areas. The residents along this street have had to put up with this for quite a while, and so it's understandable that their patience has worn, and we need to get the signs up and open up that roadway.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Okay. Patrick, do you have anything? Mitch? I suppose she took your thunder, didn't she?
I told Ken that like for two years, that that could be parking on both sides. But it's before construction, I'm good at that. And he always goes, oh.
Can we just put a...
It's like, why? It's like, why?
You never parked out there, right?
I wasn't parked out there today, I promise.
Jim, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Ken, anything else?
Nope.
Mike?
I will be out the office part of next week if the license account is put off, send an email, give me the details, but I'll be off Monday and Tuesday, in fact, Wednesday afternoon.
Okay. Barb, you have anything?
No.
Maggie? Amy? I know you have some.
I do have something.
Because you're on like seven committees now.
The memorial, committee meeting, the first one...
The Memorial Committee meeting, the first one I went to, it is exciting. They have planned one of the big first fundraisers in February where they'll have, they're looking for bands to have entertainment, and then people come in and pay and use it as a fundraiser. So that's coming up in February, and they're planning that right now.
Do you, have they, have any funds started now or...
Yes, they do. Little bit.
Little bit, okay.
After Do Hanky, they did.
Is there any way you could provide at a future date? We've not had a lot of questions, but the question is, is who is the legal entity that is being created or has been created that's able to act in the capacity from a decision-making standpoint or a fundraising standpoint that exists so that if people want to make donations and that, that they know what the structure or the foundation of that group is that's accepting donations, just so that it's clear?
Sure, yep. I know they, we discussed that too, and I know that's, yep, I'll for sure have that.
That way we can answer questions that have come through our way as well.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
David? I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Thank you, everyone, for coming.